Commissioners, the meeting is live.
Okay. Good morning. Welcome to the Riley County Commissioners' meeting, June 12th. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Chairman McKinley is going to be a little late. He's, he's opening a meeting over at the Treasurers Conference. So he will be here today. So, so we, but we will go forward. First item on our agenda is public comment. Anyone wants to make a comment? Susan?
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Susan Adamcheck, 1,000 mil Valley Circle, and a member of the Manhattan City Commission. You'll be hearing, I thought you would be hearing this morning, from our members of our community about their positions regarding the establishment of a reinvestment housing incentive district, RHID, to advance a housing project in Manhattan, Kansas. They have, they'll presumably they will present facts and figures in support or opposition of the proposed project. I'd like to draw your attention to the opportunity that this presents our representative governing bodies to engage in a public-private partnership to address housing needs in our community. One year ago, in May of 2024, the National League of Cities and the American Planning Association collaborated to produce the Housing Supply Accelerator Handbook: Solutions, Systems, and Partnerships. It's a timely coincidence that NLC is reviewing the use and impact of this document, even as we are trying to advance our efforts in Riley County and the city of Manhattan. Quoting from the NLC website, "Key insights from this playbook include: The national housing supply shortage demands collective momentum and shared responsibility from each sector of the housing market to achieve meaningful progress. Housing supply challenges involve myriad factors: construction and development, finance, land use and regulations, and infrastructure and workforce. A systems approach to addressing housing supply recognizes that all of these factors are interconnected and looks at scalable solutions and promising practices, offering a pathway to address local challenges. Multi-layered solutions are needed to address housing supply at the local level. The combination of local housing strategies in coordination with all housing stakeholders will propel our community forward. An actionable level of consensus, not necessarily perfect consensus, is needed to make progress to tackle today's housing supply challenges. I ask that you either support this project, as both the City Commission and School District USD 383 have done, or take no action this morning, so that we can proceed with an actionable level of consensus. Thank you for your consideration."
Thank you, Susan. Are there any other public comments?
Yes.
Good morning, Commissioners. Rich Wagner, Riley County Clerk. It is that time of year, of course, you know, when all public entities are working on their budgets. And the county clerk's office is, plays a role in every public entity's producing their budgets. From setting the assessed valuation, once we get certified appraised from the county appraiser. And then also our task, you know, after everyone gets their budgets done is, we, our office has to certify that those budgets are correct for all public entities, including the city, USD 383, cemetery districts, townships. Important part of the puzzle for all of them, including Riley County, is that assessed valuation in June. That's the assessed valuation that the governing bodies get to use in developing their budgets. Of course, as those of us familiar with the process know, it's the November assessed valuation, once it is finalized, that the budgets are finalized on and the mill levy is calculated on. But the June certified values this year, the amount that is, will be used for Riley County is $853,823, which equates to the value of the mill for Riley County. Riley County only, $853,082. This is a modest 3.05% increase. So, not a large increase in revenues. I know the Commissioners have received the budget requests from all the departments and outside agencies, and of course, the requests add up to a higher percentage than that. And so I've been at this a few years, so I, I know how the exercise goes and we'll start the, the Commissioners will start sorting out which direction they want to go with the budget. And the mill levies required and the expenditures required and all other public entities will as well. We have sent their assessed valuations to those other public entities yesterday, so they're, they're receiving that information. But I do have a copy for all of you. Any questions, Commissioners? You can look at this, and you will see real estate, a modest 3% is broken down. Also have comparisons, Commissioners, on there from '22, '23, '24, and then this year's. Just to give you a snapshot of where we've been, you know, '23, we had a 9.98, and '24, we had a 4.43. So we're even down from last year. A sig- fairly significant amount. But this was a topic in Monday's conversation with the Commissioners. We didn't know if we would have them quite done this early. Staff in the office, Joe and Carly, have been working hard. What you have to realize is, we're not only working on ours, we're working on all other public entities' assessed valuations. And a big part of the delay is getting the information from other outside counties that we have districts that are tied together, because we have to get their valuation for the portion that that district is within our county. Any questions?
We're gonna have our work cut out for us this year.
I think all public entities, well. Okay, thank you, Commissioners.
Any other public comments? Seeing none, we'll go to Commissioner Comment. Commissioner Ford?
Yes, uh, let's see. Well, as already mentioned, but Monday afternoon, we had our quarterly county officials' luncheon right here in the B O C C chambers. Of course, the items of discussion were continuing efforts on the fiscal year 2026 budget. And first, we've got a large piece of that just, just right now. So, like I said, we'll have our work cut out for us. Updates and continued work, of course, on our county strategic plan and work on advancing space and facility needs. Thought we had a really good conversation on that. Continued efforts on working on completion of the Riley County Comprehensive Plan, and that work obviously continues. So, looking forward to see what we come up with at the end of the year for that. And thanks to all attended, and always appreciate the feedback and dialogue there. Also on Monday, I had my monthly appointment with my doctor. I can say it all went well, or I'll just say all status quo at the moment.
You didn't eat the pizza until afterwards?
I did. I did not. I told it that there was a salad sticker on the box, so it was healthy. So, I don't know if she bought it or not, but it is what it is. So, we're going to discuss some alternatives, establish some things moving forward, and just hope everything continues to stay good in that fashion moving forward. Tuesday evening, I met with Riley County Attorney Barry Wilkerson to discuss a handful of county-related items that have come up along the way, get some feedback and some thoughts, particularly in the sector of both judiciary and law enforcement. Always good to get some advice and information in that field. Of course, I'm not well-versed sometimes on that, so it's always good. So, appreciated the feedback from him on that. Last evening, there was June Business After Hours hosted by the Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce, as was sponsored by the Cal Valley Rodeo out at RC McGraw's, along with Q103.5 radio station. That's usually a pretty, pretty good, pretty good one out of the year. Of course, that's in correlation with next month's fair, and Cal Valley Rodeo, that'll take place in late July. It's just right around the corner, believe it or not. So, the rest of the week, I've spent staying caught up at work, getting caught up on numerous conversations. Of course, including the big one that'll take place later this morning. So, and that's all I've got.
Well, when, when Commissioner McKinley gets here, we'll take his comments. So, anyway, um, all right, um, I too attended the county officials' luncheon. I think Commissioner Ford covered it very well. It was, it was a good meeting, and I always enjoy those meetings where everybody gets together and talks about their, the issues and ideas that kind of, so. And then Tuesday, I had a personnel committee, committee meeting at my church. We're trying to work through some policy issues to meet some insurance requirements. It seems as though insurance companies keep going up really high and, and putting all these, these obstacles in front of people as far as requirements. So, it's, it was quite a process, and you know, for this little committee, it's really kind of tough. Anyway, I also spent time reading and rereading information on today's RHID discussion that's in front of us, plus a lot of other paperwork that we, we have had to go through. Tuesday evening, I attended the monthly meeting of Riley County Democrats at the Douglas Center, and that was well-attended. A lot of good ideas came up. Let's see, Wednesday, can continue to work through our paperwork, including the agenda and documents for today's meetings, meeting emails, texts, and return calls to make. I did have an appointment with my primary care physician in the afternoon to figure out a plan going forward, PT, and since I'm not going to do water PT anymore.
Air PT, huh?
Maybe, I guess, yeah. So, yeah, like, I had a couple more sessions, which it canceled at the water thing. They don't know what, what was in it that caused my outbreak. But anyway. Then later, yesterday afternoon, I did meet with David Cooper, and we were hiring as an attorney for us and discussed various issues. He had wanted to get with me before I left town next week. So, I saw his first ones. Good meeting. And a reminder, I'm going to be gone from the 15th, which is a Sunday, through the 22nd, following Sunday. And I'll be back for Monday's meeting, and then the ribbon cutting of our great new EMT building. That's going to be at 2:30 in the afternoon, and with the open house to follow. So, everybody needs to come, come, get out and, and see our new facility, which is, the facility's been covered by ARPA funds, which was set aside for the ambulance.
One silver lining from COVID.
Yes, it is. So, that's all I have.
Prevention, Commissioners?
Yeah.
First item I have, need a motion on engagement letter and agreement.
Just a second here, get it pulled up. Do we need to do separate ones? There are two separate ones, right?
There are two separate agreements, yeah. But I think that they're just included in the.
Okay, so we just want to do both at the same time?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll go ahead and make a motion. The board approved these letters and agreements as provided in, in the documents.
I would second that. It's been moved and seconded to approve the lettered agreement with Fisher Patterson Sailor and Smith, as provided. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm a little out of practice here. Oh, okay.
Just stack them up there.
Next Commissioners, the need a motion to approve deploying the mobile command post vehicle and two light tower generator units in Walmigo for the July 4th celebration. Something typically done annually.
Nothing, nothing out of the ordinary, Lori?
No, sir.
Okay. Good with that. I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve deploying the mobile command post vehicle and two light tower generator units to Walmigo for the 4th of July celebration.
I'd second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Go Boom Town.
Go Boom.
Sure. Next Commissioner, Riley County Employee Action Formers Brittany Thomas, New hire, Customer Service Rep 1, Treasurers Office, Ashley Davies, new hire, as a childcare provider in the Health Department, Amy Nelson, New hire, Public Works Operator 1, Public Works Department, Chad Larson, Volunteer Firefighter, Fire Department's history. Both please sign.
On Greg's desk, right? He's going to have to stack.
Teach him for being late.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Not today. I drive, I drive to Riley and get him.
I was kind of worried about when I drove up. He always beats me here.
Joe made the joke yesterday that he was, he was going to come to Chappan and get me if I called and said today. And he was like, I don't know where you live, all the prescribed down, I'm reached, reen.
Where is the Treasurers?
It's down, uh, Holiday Inn.
Wow.
Oh, my camp, on campus?
That's nice.
Yeah.
Wow, interesting.
That's a little lighter this time of the year, at least.
You can. No, anyone can make a motion. Absolutely.
I do.
Yep, absolutely.
Johnston.
Jacob can. You can.
Sure.
I don't want to.
Oh, come on. You missed out on all the fun.
Want to be a lawyer, huh?
Certain days. Next Commissioner, need a motion to approve payroll and accounts payable.
So moved.
I'd second that. It's been moved and seconded to approve payroll and accounts payable. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both please sign.
I was thinking of some kind of a question to ask, but Ashley's not here, so I guess we can't ask it.
Yeah.
Maybe, why should you guys scare her off? Greg scared her off. That's for sure. That is for sure.
Money's not all that important.
Right, Brittany?
Rest of the world that?
Yeah.
Just tell the rest of the world that. I have. They never listen.
Budget season.
We'll be getting that sheep shortly, won't we?
I'm looking maybe to schedule the first session, June 23rd.
The day I get back, of course.
Welcome. Yeah, welcome back.
Yeah.
Welcome back, is there the?
Although ambulance hopefully. The EMT building.
Then you'll have something to look forward to after my presentation.
Yeah.
It's like, if I get through this, I can get to that.
It's going to be depressing, that's for sure.
A lot of people.
What a big raid.
Any changes to the June 5th meeting, Commissioners?
I didn't see anything.
5th, June 9th.
Well, we had both, two of them, 5th and 9th, one here.
Yeah, the ones weren't on there, remember?
Oh, because of the, yeah, the computer blew. We need to do them separately, or?
Yeah, please.
Okay, I'll start off with approving the minutes from the June 5th meeting of the Riley County Commission.
I would second that. It's, it's all in favor?
Any changes, Commissioners, to the minutes of June 9th?
No. I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the minutes from the June 9th meeting of the Riley County Commission.
I would second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Tentative agenda, Commissioners? Any items for next week's press conference?
Although looking at on here, I guess it's probably just the typo, but it says February 24th.
What does?
On mine.
On which?
Tentative agenda.
Oh, really?
Says June 16th, and then, yeah, 2/24/25.
Oh, really? Yeah, mine doesn't. Huh, that's odd.
Yeah, well, 23rd.
Mine says June 23rd, and.
June 16th.
I pull it up, it pulls up on there, but it did say.
Sorry about that.
That's all right.
Uh, next Commissioner, you have Mr. Hanson at nine o'clock.
Just as you ran.
All right.
That's 20 bucks. That's for the Steak and Lobster Fund.
Cash, that's our, our lobster fund.
Hey, I'll pitch in for that.
That is not a thing.
As long as everybody else starts bitching in too, right?
We don't have slash funds.
No slash fund?
No. It's a line item.
Yeah, slash fund. I don't watch department, though, that's.
Budget and finance.
Budget, okay.
Budget and finance doesn't have any budgets.
I make a motion. Well, technically, it would be his budget.
The administrative services.
It's under the food and beverage line item.
The limits, the policy that Mission has passed, it is my duty to enforce that policy.
Like, you've been trained.
I'm standing at the Western Alexandria Old Town.
Oh, when you go to DC. Andrea, you're over across, you're over out of the district, then.
Old Town, too.
Yeah. That's across the river there. That's, that's over by Reagan National, isn't it?
That's out of the break.
Yeah.
Yep, a complete itinerary, four days.
Which conference you're going to.
You don't think you're going to a conference, you're doing something different, aren't you?
Yeah, no, it's a school thing. There's kids from our school district, 378 in Manhattan, all going together.
Yeah. He's never been to Washington DC. It'll be his first time.
Are you kidding?
Yeah.
Wow, you're going to love it.
My wife and I both. Neither one of them.
Oh, really?
I've given her several beers.
Oh, man.
It's just great.
Yeah, they got a full itinerary where it's all filled out.
I think you're going to have fun.
There's a lot of cool stuff.
Yeah.
And that's the best part. We didn't have to plan any.
It's all planned for you, huh?
Yeah.
Right. Good morning, Commissioners. Jacob Hanson, Interim County, Riley County Counselor. Just got a couple of things to update you guys on. Specifically, yesterday, I was able to receive a special prosecutor appointment from Judge Banister, so we got that in place. So, with as far as the nuisance abatement cases and how they proceed, right now, a lot of them are just sitting on status hearings as we kind of move forward and work through some issues. But hopefully, now we'll be able to put together some diversion agreements, because without that authority, I really wasn't able to work on that case. Nothing was able to be done until I got that appointment. So, that's been kind of held off until now. So, that, hopefully, those nuisance abatement cases all have a lot more updates for you guys here in the future. One other thing I wanted to point out, on Monday, I'll have that fireworks resolution for you guys, where we're just extending the dates for the sale for June 28th through July 4th. We're increasing the license fee to $100 up from 25. And then, we're going to also include an update for prohibition on lantern-like fireworks. Usually, these are things that have open flames and encased in paper or something similar, and just kind of set out. Russell Stukey, of course, made that suggestion, considering the fire hazard, those obviously present. I'll have him here on Monday, if you guys have any more technical questions on maybe why we decided to include that. But it was just asked, and so I provided within the resolution, and that's it. You have any questions on that? And then, secondly, on Monday, what you guys have to look forward to is the Flint Hills Metropolitan Planning Organization contracts will be in front of you guys on Monday as well. And I've been working with the city and Pot County. And I've been working with the city and Pot County in order to get those addressed. And we all finally agreed on on the contract forms. Yeah, and this is so these are for, yeah, the second connection to Manhattan for Blue Township and then the others for the twenty fourth quarter starting study. And so those will be in front of you guys on Monday for signature as well. Those are really the more pressing matters that I have for you guys. If there's any questions on on what's going on in my office, I'm happy to answer.
You guys seem to be working diligently on all this stuff.
I think so. It definitely feels that way, I'm happy to, now that we got the, you know, contract signed with Fisher Patterson. We're going to be working with Mr. Beemanberg and getting him acquainted with everybody and.
How are we going to do this with now two Jakes?
He's gonna be Jake, I'll be Jacob.
That's right, that's right.
Or you could just refer to to Hanson or last names if that's easier too.
I was just gonna go with Jake and then Jake from State Farm.
Heard that, I gotta ask him how many times he's heard that one too. But yeah, I should I guess mention that, you know, we'll be working with Jake on a number of things. More of the larger projects that we have going on in our office. So, definitely looking forward to that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure, you have brilliant nine points, you have a little break.
Oh goodness. Yeah, does have anything else, for heaven's sake, sure an attorney.
I do, but it's all confidential attorney-client communication, it's hard.
You want to have an executive session?
Didn't ask for it earlier, so don't give him any ideas.
I'm sure we can think of something we want to.
And. I'm very. I know, it looks like five, go back.
Exactly, let's stress.
The end of a world. We looked at each other. It's like. I saw Greg come in.
I'm doing that, huh?
Yeah. We'll go back to his comments.
I have one put on your desk, Amanda provided them on the eleven to you.
Supposed to be. Hi, how are you?
Great, how are you doing?
Good, good to see you. Good. Retirement's great, huh?
Yeah, yeah. So if he ever gets there. Oh yeah.
Welcome to Go-Ka.
Yeah, I survived.
Thanks.
Your. Public speaking is survival.
Your cohort. Became ill today.
I.
You're gonna come up to Riley and drag you out.
Actually, I am, but that's, that's just nerves. Look like a speech. That's something I do. Always, right? I wouldn't miss that. But easier crowds.
Enter the budget hearing. You want me to?
Yeah, be well, get going, catch up with all of this.
Okay, go ahead.
Good morning Commissioners Brittany Phillips Budget and Finance Officer here to present this morning our monthly cash flows. So I'll start off with the Riley County Economic Development Fund. Of course, you'll see that we're at forty one point seven percent through the year so far. Our total expenditures for the year are a hundred and seven thousand one hundred and fourteen dollars. Bringing our unencumbered cash balance to three hundred and forty four thousand two hundred and forty two dollars. Here's of course a detailed list of all the expenditures and these are all things the Commissioners have approved. Next, we'll move on to county building. We brought in in the month of May a total of one hundred and forty thousand nine hundred and thirty seven dollars. And spent seventy four thousand five hundred and fifty five dollars. Bringing our unencumbered cash balance to four hundred and eighty four thousand six hundred and eighty two. Next, we have CIP. No revenue was was brought in for the month of May. But we did have eight hundred and forty seven thousand seven hundred and fifty five dollars in expenditures, bringing in our expenditures for the year. To one million six hundred and thirty one thousand one hundred and eighty dollars. And our unencumbered cash balance to twenty eight million six hundred and eighty three thousand seventy one dollars. Of course, our long list of projects. Next, we have the half cent sales tax, which of course we are no longer bringing in revenue on this fund. We did spend fifty four thousand fifty one dollars. Bringing our total expenditures for the year to two hundred and thirty one thousand eight hundred and eighty three dollars. Bringing our unencumbered cash balance to six million one hundred and eighty thousand three hundred and twenty dollars.
And fifteen cents.
Yes, I mean. Yes, I mean. I skip cents on everything. Next, you have the point-two cent sales tax. We have brought in two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one dollars, and for a total revenue of one million, nine, ninety-four thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars with no expenditures to date, bringing our unencumbered cash balance to five million, nine hundred and forty thousand, seventy-four dollars. And then, again, just kind of giving you an overview of ARPA to kind of see where we're at. So you know, we did receive fourteen million, four hundred and eighteen thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars, and this has funded multiple projects, including Fairmont Heights Sewer back in twenty-twenty-one. You approved eight hundred thousand to Keats, and to date, you know, they've spent three hundred and fifty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine dollars. The EMS headquarters that we're doing a ribbon-cutting for in a couple of weeks. So it got the largest amount of money, but it's great because it's gonna be a wonderful building. And we have also paid for the North County EMS station, and now are working on the UP Fire Station, and then the next big project is the emergency management renovation. Any questions on any of the things that I presented today? Great, thank you.
Thank you, Brestin. Next question, Angela Shepherd, nine thirty.
Greg, did you want to do any of your comments?
Angelo, wait until nine thirty in the dark. Didn't want to stand up there too long, but if you'd like, you can.
Did he get a copy of the? Value. Values. Excuse me, Greg.
You're Mark Weaver. Yeah.
I prayed you would go cut out. Really?
How many people were there?
Oh, that basement room. Good size.
Those are treasures, I see. Wasn't?
You got a meeting. Won't be as proud as I got here. I'm sure they're used to it, too.
Wow, I think we should cut out. I'm always like your.
She was ready to drag up there and drag you out.
Grizzy.
Go get him. A little nervous today.
We'd be first in line to get him, because I mean, we'd be throwing elbows to get him.
Or speedy.
Who wouldn't do that, do you?
Can't trust anybody. Yeah, I'm aware. I'm aware.
That one, yeah.
Greg, you wanna pop for just a quick minute or two?
I knew most of what I meant.
They almost dropped an executive session on us.
That was asked for.
Did you look at the punch list that? That RP, Archage Images came up with? I thought that, I mean, the way they did that, and I sent even those.
Yeah.
Probably takes a little more time, but it makes it a lot easier.
They do a good job.
Because usually you just get a typed list, and then you go back trying to remember what was it in this room.
Yeah, no, I like how they did it, sure.
They had a map, picture each room, saying where there was a problem.
Oh, really? That's cool.
It's really nice.
I didn't see that. I guess they just sent it to the committee, basically, yeah.
Right, Angela.
Mr. Chairman, members of the governing body, thank you for the opportunity to visit with us this morning. I'm Kent Glasscock, interim Executive Director of Flint Hills Regional Council. And as you will recall, the council in a seven-county area exists to advance the communities, counties, and prosperity of the Flint Hills. We have gone to a system of contract grant writing. So we have expert grant writers who are experienced at the federal, state, and private foundation levels. And that process has gone extremely well. Over the course of the last eighteen months, we have written about six and a half million dollars of grants, and about three and a half million dollars of those grants have been awarded. The safe routes for all that we're going to talk to you about this morning, we think is an opportunity for you. And while you're not a member, we thought that we would offer to, if you're interested in that program, which is a federal DOT program, that we would write the grant for you for free and to administer that grant if it's awarded. So we appreciate the time that you're giving us this morning, and I'd like to introduce somebody that you know very well, Angela Shepherd, who will review the process, the grant, and the opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for your time this morning. I'm Angela Shepherd. Most of you probably know me. I'm the City Planner and Zoning Administrator for Ogden. And in all of my spare time, I'm writing grants for Flint Hills Regional Council now, and just helping the communities in our region develop projects and try to find funding and secure funding for those projects. So today, I want to talk to you about the Safe Routes for All program. This is, like Kent said, a federal DOT program that the main goal is to provide safer roads for all road users. And the goal would be zero fatalities or serious injuries on our roads. This year, they, in this round, they have strongly encouraged regional cooperation. If you have, like, for the Flint Hills Regional Council, if you have multiple applications going in, they've asked that they be combined into like a group application. So as Kent said, you guys aren't members currently, but we realize how important it is to have your support for a regional application. And Riley County is an essential part of our region, so we just wanted to ask if you wanted to participate. In this program, the first thing that you have to complete is a comprehensive safety action plan, and that's what we would be requesting funds for. What this does is it takes a comprehensive look at all the roadways for you guys in Riley County, and then proposes suggestions on how to make those roadways safer, either through permanent projects or temporary demonstration projects. So that's what we would be actually applying for in this round, is to get that comprehensive safety action plan done. This meets regional goals, the Flint Hills MPO twenty-forty plan. It would work in conjunction with that plan, as well as the state's Drive to Zero initiative. And so basically, well, currently Ogden has secured funding for this program. We're waiting to get our grant agreement signed. Gary County and Junction City have also. And so we're trying to get the rest of the areas in the region covered by a safety action plan. Because in future rounds, we would be able to apply for construction funds to do some of the projects that come out of the safety action plan. The only commitment that we would need from Riley County would be your agreement to participate in a letter of support. As Kent said, we would write the grant, administer it. Any matching funds would come from the Build Kansas Fund, and so there's no monetary commitment on the county's part. So I guess that brings us to my direct request is that you guys would agree to participate in the grant application for the region.
In your notes, it says in that, consider involvement and determine appropriate level of commitment. But what's that mean? I mean, it seems sounds like we're either in or out.
You are either. I mean, either you decide that you want to participate or you don't. Like, we couldn't move forward with the safety action or any grant funding for Riley County without you guys agreeing. Your commitment, I would work with RCPD, the MPO, to gather the data that we need for Riley County. As I said, the only direct commitment that you would have as a county would be a letter of support and an agreement to participate. Of course, if we get awarded the actual planning process, Flint Hills Regional Council would handle the public outreach portion of that. But it would be, we would hire a contractor to come in and actually do the safety planning.
So it wouldn't require any staff time on our behalf, like through our planning department, or?
For the grant application, no. If it's awarded, I'm sure that there will be some data that needs to be gathered from the county through the contractor, but not anything, no big ask, no.
And will that include that you said Ogden's oriented, or you talked to the other small towns to see if they?
We have reached out, and we haven't gotten a response. We will reach out again. With the Riley County, we've talked to Manhattan, and they, I don't think they're going to participate at this point. I haven't gotten a firm answer on that yet, but it's sounding like that's probably not gonna happen. And honestly, like in Gary County, Junction City did their own application. It gets kind of weird with the overlapping authorities. So we've reached out to them, but we would reach out to Riley and Leonardville and Randolph as well, yeah.
Good, that's, yeah, it sounds like a good deal.
Yeah.
Something worth trying.
I don't know, do you guys have?
You know I'm very. Consensus has the same authorities motion.
Get the letter.
Yep.
Thank you, guys, so much.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you, thank you.
Angela, just asking, do you have an example of the draft letter of support?
We'll get, I'll get one.
That's what I was gonna say.
Get it to him or me, and I'll get it to him anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Commissioner, you had eight minutes, nine forty-five.
So the nine forty-five one, is that Jacob, is that the one for the comments?
Nine forty-five, no.
That's not the RIT.
Nope.
Okay.
No, RIT will be until ten forty-five.
Okay.
Although, I wouldn't be surprised if it comes up at nine forty-five.
Think we need to agree. Talked about for a while, but discussion for later.
Yeah, I got that.
Thank you. Greg, did you want me to go over that assessed valuation I gave your report to the board for things this morning?
Yeah, I mean, is that the one you said?
No, the one.
It's this one.
That one there.
Oh, didn't get that.
It's in the pile, I think.
No, it's on my file here.
Well, look at this. I didn't have any time, but here.
So the value of the mill, of course, is eight hundred and fifty-three thousand, eighty-two dollars. That's total assessed valuation, only three point zero five percent increase, and you can see what the reason is. So modesty.
Do you need this back?
I got that, I said, I want you to have one.
Okay.
You can see up above the breakout of residential utilities and all that good stuff.
That's quite a bit less. When you look at twenty-three, my goodness, it's really changed.
That's inflation.
Nine forty-five?
Yep, nine forty-five.
It's for my presentation.
You just gave this to me, okay. Being buried in paper here.
I think by the time we get to the twenty-third, you can get us to six percent, can't you? I'm gonna take that as a no. Rich, you can give us a six percent, can't you?
Six percent, what?
Give us the six percent.
I'm not even gonna say my first box. Because Anna would throw something at me.
She's all the way across the room, though.
Yeah, but. I have faith she'd hit me. I have faith she'd hit me. Great, you still have your valuation sheet here. I steal yours and you get a new one to go. I keep one over here and over there. That was timely information.
I guess I do need translation. This, when the, when these tips goes off.
Then he goes back on. Yep. And that full values realized.
And this one, would you say twenty-seven, if it goes back on?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah.
No.
It's one, are you talking north and south? Okay, so that's one. It comes back on.
Okay, I thought, I thought for one time the other. Oh, the Aggieville one probably isn't. This is down north and south.
Yes.
How many years was that?
It came, what's that?
How many years was that?
Twenty, twenty.
Twenty.
They'd both been playing. I'm glad it doesn't look this.
Follow that conversation.
Just. Yeah, that's assessed. That's the number we'll use when this is all the budget on that eight hundred and fifty-three.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, but. Two years, but eventually. Twenty-six, well, I guess. This is the twenty-sixth, so next year.
Thank you, Chairman McKinley and Commissioners Darren Solden, Director of Economic Development at Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce. A couple of project updates this morning and then Christian is gonna give the. Give the military update. Obviously a lot of moving pieces on that, which all have been, have been engaged and we appreciate that and, and. Military programming and lunches, et cetera. So I just highlight, you know, it's been, since we were last in here. To give our monthly economic development update, there was a fair amount of movement there in late May around some projects. Some in Riley County, some in Potawatomi County, but as you remember going back in earlier this year, PTMW project over in. In, on the east side of Manhattan, in Potawatomi County, but that's that building K, that spec industrial building, hundred and forty-six new jobs, about sixty thousand. Average salary. And then late last month, the city approved a, a. A, a project or sale of land that will ultimately lead to a project out in the business park by the airport. So. Sold that to Amazon, anticipate based on some of the preliminary information that was provided as part of that land sale that. In the range of a seventy thousand square foot facility out there. So they're talking, you know, that gets pretty, pretty quickly into. Into a pretty significant industrial building and a, and a good number of jobs associated with it, although those numbers have not been released to this point. But I think one of the key things to remember with that is that that's gonna be a project that does not have any other incentives attached to it. So it's going on the tax rolls right away. Once it's. Once it's built, you know, I think it's fair to say that among, between, between that, over the course, if you look over the course of the next eighteen months to two years. Get that project built on the tax rolls and then with, with downtown redevelopment and the Civic Plus building, that ten-year payment will. Roll off that, those three projects together generate nearly, probably in the range of three million dollars. To city, county and school districts per year in, in property tax. So. Uh, good, good timing growth on those previous projects that had been approved. Coming on the tax rolls and excited about that project out by the airport. Being one that does not have any other incentives attached with it and, and it will be on the tax rolls from the get-go. Also want to highlight that about that same time. There in late, late May, there was an announcement over in, in Womigo, obviously on the Caterpillar facility. That's one updated John, kind of as things have progressed over the last. Nine months to a year. It was almost exactly, in fact, a year ago last week, the Caterpillar made the announcement that they were gonna be. Shuttering that facility and, and you know, I can, I can share that there was a lot of interest in that facility, both in state, from. Regionally, but also across the country and even some international companies had, had folks coming in and seeing, looking at that building. Ultimately, what, what ended up happening with solar turbines is gonna, is gonna take over operation of that. They're a wholly owned subsidiary. Area of Caterpillar, but they'll be making component parts that go into. Into their electricity generating turbines or turbines. So a little bit confusing on the name, but. Solar is the name of the company, Solar Turbines is, is, they're making, they're making the turbines and the associated. Hardware that goes into electricity generation. So a big generator, big industrial generators, those sorts of things. So. Yeah, it's a great thing for the region, means that you retain a lot of folks there. But when you combine that, PTMW, this, this anticipated Amazon deal, you're talking about nearly five hundred jobs. Retained and or created in the region. So I think that's a pretty impactful stretch of time there over, over a couple of months. And it's exciting. We're getting some more things in the pipeline and, and including, including with the industrial park by the airport. So excited to be able to. Come update on those hopefully over the course of the next, next couple of months as we get that, get that together. So. Any questions on any of those, any of those projects before I hand it over to Christian? All right, Christian Bishop, Military Relations Manager.
Morning, Commissioners Chairman McKinley. I just wanted to give you guys a quick update about Fort Riley and local military community. So. First Brigade Combat Team is, has loaded up the railheads and is preparing to gear for their nine-month deployment. And today they're actually having a deployment fair this afternoon, which I will be attending. It's just a great way to connect with families, let them know the events, jobs that we have in Manhattan. To continue to encourage them to stay here during that nine months. There are still aviators from First Cab and then troops from Ninety-seventh Battalion who are at the southern border. There's approximately five hundred of them that are continuing that mission for the nation's defense. The Big Red One on Sunday turned a hundred and eight. They don't look at it old, but they kicked off Monday with a division run. So it's pretty amazing to watch almost all fifteen thousand of them in uniform run three point seven miles. And this year they changed the route. So if you've ever gone to division and gone up the back hill. Where that airplane is, they finished the run going that way. And I did it. So I applaud all of them because I said I'd never do it again. But if you, yeah, but if you follow them on social media, the First Infantry Division, click on the link, listen up. It gives just a great description of First Infantry Division being the first division to deploy. And so it's just a reminder to all why it's a great day to be a Big Red One soldier. So I encourage that. And they will continue Victory Week celebrations on June twenty-third through twenty-seventh. And it's just competitions throughout. It's a great way to build camaraderie. And then they do wrap up with the Victory Cup presentation, which does solidify who the best division is in the Big Red One. And then during that week, we'll have our Military Relations Combined Lunch with the Junction City Military Affairs. And General Carter Ham will be our guest speaker and he is a former Big Red One Division Commander. So you can go online or you can call our office if you would like to get registered. Just some awesome things coming up. So this Friday, they're bringing back their summer concert series. So I've said it lots of times. But Gary Sinise and Lieutenant Dan Band will be performing. So it is a free concert. Super easy to get in post. You can bring your lawn chairs. They will have food and drinks. The biggest thing is no pets. Unless you have service dogs. So great way to kick off concerts. And then on the twenty-seventh to end Victory Week, they have Maddie and Tay performing and they are bringing back fireworks. So again, free concert open to public, the gates open at five. So just come out and enjoy. Some other things that are going on is this Saturday is Flag Day. So at City Hall. At nine AM, we will have a Flag Day ceremony. Thank you to Chairman McKinley for giving remarks as well as the mayor. And then also on Friday, as you guys have heard, there is a parade on Washington. So we have approximately four hundred troops from the First Infantry Division and the command team. Will be marching in that parade as well. And then just other just change of commands. June eighteenth, the First Brigade will have their change of command and not only their commander, but their sergeant major right before they deploy. So depending, any questions? June is packed and I'll have more updates for Joel.
You say fireworks, do you mean the bigger ones or just the regular ones?
Big fireworks.
Okay, good deal, good deal.
Big fireworks.
One thing real quick, just I apologize for skipping, skipping over it earlier. I didn't look at my notes close enough. We had Stephanie Pearson with Innovate Twenty-four last month, update on entrepreneurial activity. And she referenced that she was hiring some folks. She referenced one of those Stacy Words, who she brought on board. She has hired the second person now as well. So Stacy was a local hire. Jacob, the, the, the second person is a relocation from Wichita. But so they're fully staffed from a. And just trying to make sure that, that public and business owners, everyone's aware. So all of the small business development services. Education, consulting, et cetera, all that is now fully staffed in the region. So if, if folks. Are in need of those services or interested in learning more. Just go to Innovate Twenty-four's website, contact or contact Stephanie and, and they can, they can get signed up for. Consulting services or other educational opportunities through Innovate or through the Small Business Development Center. So glad to have that all, all up and running. Appreciate it, Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, if you have diamonds.
Hi, Brittany, how are you? I couldn't be better. That treats me pretty well. Like I said, I, I mixed them up. I really. My heart of hearts, I think we should. I definitely, but at the same time, I could look. Three or four hundred. She won't be able to. I just hope she does. That's the downside of it. But. I appreciate it because she started to get to be fairly. She liked to text me at like four o'clock. She, she was pretty wrong.
Campaign insurance been many faster.
Justin, by Justin in high school. I knew Lily was wrong.
So I'm not. She's gonna cry because I'm laughing so hard. That's like, yeah, I know.
Apparently she doesn't history. She said, I see one.
That was weird. I shook my head too. There's still, I think, a process. Maybe, maybe it did. It's hard to keep up with all of it sometimes.
Hi, how you doing? Yeah, probably so. Old building.
Getting the windows replaced.
Yeah, we do, we do. Thank you. Very.
All right. Need to make a motion. Yeah, I'll move that we recess as the Board of County Commission and convene as the Board of County Health.
I second that.
It's a move and second to. About to recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as the Board of Health, favor.
Diane Creek, Health Director for Riley County Health Department. I'm here to give you my monthly report. We had the Community Baby Shower. Which is an annual event on Saturday, May thirty-first. And it was extremely successful. It was my first baby shower. We had it at Northview Elementary School. And we had a hundred and twelve individual, um, families. And we had two hundred and thirty-one individual people. We gave away ninety pack and plays and to get a pack and play, they had to listen to a safe sleep demonstration and education session. Um, so, because that's kind of the whole point of it is to teach about safe sleep and, and, um, so we had ninety people that did that. We had a lot of people that went in and listened to the demonstration and the education, but they didn't choose to take a pack and play. Um, because maybe they already had one or they could afford their own. So we have about sixty pack and plays left over. And so we're gonna take them, which is a good problem to have. And so we're gonna take them out to one of the other communities in Riley County. So that, you know, it's just not a Manhattan event. The event that we do out in the county will be smaller, on a smaller scale. Uh, but we will still provide the education and, you know, the safe sleep education. So, um, for the public, just watch our Facebook page for more information and, and we'll get that planned and, and get that going. So, um, the other thing that Erin and I, our fiscal analysts are doing is that we're working to sign up the Health Department, so the state's debt set off. It's a program that if you have people who owe the Health Department money or any agency, um, they can sign up there. And then what we do is we put that information into the state system. And then if they get a tax return or if they, if they, I'm not sure if they win the lottery, if then, you know. Is it the lottery too?
Yeah, so when I was working at the Department of Administration prior, I was the attorney that worked on the debt set off program. So yeah, it would be casino winnings, lottery, any, any payment that would come from the state gets flagged.
Yeah, so, and then, you know, we'll get a portion of that. I'm sure the state keeps a portion too, you know, just for the service, but yeah. So that will help, you know, get some of the people that, um, are very far behind on their debts. So, um, we're working on that. Um, I do have one thing that I want to let you guys know that I didn't, we just found out about it yesterday and, and just, um, didn't have time to put it on the agenda. Um, there have been, and let me read it because the information comes from KDHE. So according to the Kansas Department of Health and Environment, during the five-week period from April twenty-seventh to May thirty-first, there were thirty-five visits to the emergency departments in Riley County where overdose was suspected among patients aged ten years or older. Um, this is more than sixteen visits for the suspected overdose that would have been expected in Riley County during this timeframe, um, over the past year. So, uh, in the last fifty-two, uh, weeks. The average age of these patients was thirty-four years old and about forty-six of them were male. Um, so I just wanted to let you know, we're gonna do a press release with Vivian. Um, I've typed it up and then the next part of it is what we're doing in Riley County. Um, currently, right now, um, to try to prevent overdoses. Um, we have access to naloxone. Manhattan has two Save a Life stations. Uh, they're located at one of the Able at four thirty-one South Fifth Street. And the other ones at Tobacco Alley at eighteen fifteen Fort Riley Boulevard. And those are just, um, kind of like a blessing box. And these, they're purple and you just open them and there's naloxone inside and you can, you can just take the naloxone free. Uh, the Riley County Health Department at twenty thirty Tecumseh Road and Family and Resource and Child Resource Center at twenty-one oh one Claflin Road have free naloxone. Um, it's on a table inside the building. So you just come in, you go to that table, it's right in the lobby area. And you can get free naloxone. If there's none there, you can talk to the people at the front desk. Um, we have offer naloxone training. Um, if the, if you don't know how to use naloxone or you're not really sure, um, we offer free training sessions on how to use it. And you just contact the Health Department. And there's drug takeback days that are in partnership with law enforcement and the pharmacies. Um, and that will be on law enforcement pharmacy and Riley County Health Department social media pages. Um, we have lock boxes for medication. Um, that they can contact the Health Department for a lock box to lock up your medication. Cause a lot of times people get their, their first pain pills or whatever from their grandparents or their parents, you know, and they, they go in their bathroom and they take those. So, um, that'll help stop that. There's a lot of partnerships and collaborations going on in, in Manhattan and Riley County. There's Substance Misuse Task Force. Um, and there's information on this press release on if people are interested in joining that, how to do that. Flint Hills Wellness Coalition has a mental health work group. And there's information on how to, um, join that if you're interested. And then there's crisis response and direct support. So there's crisis lines, there's a nine eight eight suicide and crisis lifeline. Uh, you can call nine eight eight anytime, twenty-four hours a day. Um, and they, they help, they can either talk to you or you can do a text with those two. There's crisis, crisis response, which is through Pawnee Crisis Stabilization Unit. Um, they're twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days. Um, so that information is also gonna be on the press release. And then there's some information on how to access mental health care, um, here in Riley County. So, um, we'll keep an eye on it. We get reports from KDHE whenever the numbers are different than normal. Um, so we'll continue to get information on that. And luckily this last week was, we were back to normal number, numbers, which, you know, still isn't good. But, um, at least it wasn't so high. So I wanted to share that with you before we do the press release, um, just that you would, you would be forewarned. So, do you have any questions?
Lot of concern, but no question.
A lot of concern, a lot of concern, yeah. And we're meeting, um, we met with EMS. Oh, maybe it was last week, we've talked to RCPD about it and, you know, we're open to.
Lefine too.
We haven't contacted Lefine, um.
University side.
Yeah, the Shanika.
I will say, um, so we, when we got the notification, um, as a part of the Substance Misuse Task Force, um, individuals were identified to receive the information. Um, so one of the community health workers for Lefine was a part of that Western. Um, and then also we identified individuals who were a part of the mental health work group, um, to receive the information as well.
Good deal.
Yeah, so we're gonna keep an eye on it and we'll, we meet and talk about it all the time. So, yeah, we can figure out anything else to do to help stop that, then we'll definitely do it.
The ages were, you know, it said from ten, but also said the average age was thirty-four.
Yeah, so.
I mean, we think of it as being kids.
Yeah.
Doing it, but it's.
Yeah.
To get the averages up there, there's.
Yeah. We get the, we, we were getting the reports weekly from KDHE. Once they went up, like the first of May, I think was our first report, is that right? And so at first the age was twenty-three. I believe the average age was twenty-three. So we thought, well, okay, you know, it was the end of school, it was finals, that kind of thing. We thought, you know, that might be happening. But then gradually it's just kept going up age-wise for the average age. So, yeah. And it also gives, like, there's other counties and other little pockets, um, in Kansas too. So it's not just Riley County. Um, but yeah, so.
But like I say, it's, it's surprising that average age that.
I know.
We all have stare at that, oh, well, there's a problem with kids.
Yeah, yeah, I do assume it's teenagers or young twenties. Yeah, yeah, it's not necessarily, so, yeah, just learn something all the time.
What is a normal amount of overdoses that we get compared to this?
Jake, do you know what the average number is?
It, it depends on the time of year. I think they were expecting usually baseline of about four to six cases a week. See, I'm definitely bad.
Four to six or forty-six?
About four to six.
I like that.
So these are suspected overdoses as well. This is data that comes.
Yeah.
Local community gets aggregated by the state, it sends out into basically database of the CDC's holes. The KUC will in turn look at that data on patients. And look for, you know, appearances or I think kind of this is something that's not a good one.
And my concern is that this is just from the ED. And so what about the people that aren't going to the emergency room? You know, I mean, there could be people that, that aren't going to the hospital. You know, they're just toughing it out, out there. And so, you know, I wouldn't be surprised if the number is a little bit higher. Um, because I think it, you know, I think it would take a lot to go to the emergency room. If you were overdosing, it would be, it would be a lot. So.
Is the public allowed to pose any questions?
That's up to you.
We've got two minutes.
Um, yeah, I'm just curious about your interactions with RCPD and what their efforts are to try to identify sources of drugs.
Shanika, do you know?
I, I can't speak to what their efforts are outside of the notification that they are an active participant on the Substance Misuse Task Force. Um, when we get these notifications, there is an epidemiologist that, um, provides the information to the Health Department and an epidemiologist that provides it to, um, the Police Department. And so, um, they are notified as well as us, um, but their efforts, we haven't spoken to them about that.
And I think they've had conversations with the state. I think, I think I've seen some emails go back and forth between RCPD and KDHE. Um, so yeah.
Thank you, Chair.
So. Any questions?
Oh yeah, a lot of questions, but nothing to answer.
I wish I could answer them. Yeah, I wish I had the answer.
Go ahead, make a motion that we recess as the, uh, Board of County Health and reconvene as the Board of County Commission.
I'd second that.
Move and second to recess, county board health, convene as, reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners, all in favor.
Aye. Thank you.
Uh-oh, we got green gloves.
Visual aids this morning, commissioners.
I've never seen neon gloves like that before.
This should be interesting.
I am curious on those drug overdoses, how much fentanyl is involved with that? And street drug, dirty thirty, is what they're called. They're opioid pills that are disguised and they're.
Is it time already?
Yeah. It is.
Well, good morning, commissioners. Mike Bowler with the Riley County Noxious Weed and Household Hazardous Waste Update. Um, we'll get right into it. Our solid spraying on county roads began last month. Sections two and three have been sprayed, so we're moving right along. Spot spraying for mussisal and field vine weed will begin this week and continue through June. We have, uh, townships and a K dot contract this year. I think we ended up with six townships. That's one less than we had from the year prior. Um, we have received our new spray truck. Unfortunately, we are waiting for it to be outfitted with the spray equipment. We had hoped to get that done. Um, to be fair, we're actually moving with lightning speed. We blew the motor as the commissioners will recall from, uh, removing snow in January. We've managed to order a truck, get it outfitted with the flatbed already. But now the, uh, the holdup is getting it, um, set up to spray for weeds, which the company we deal with is down in Wichita, they are just down behind. So that's puts us down a half of the equipment we're normally have. I have reached out to K dot. I believe we are going to get the vast majority of K dot taken care of, but it may create somewhat delays in spraying. And we might look at doing some fall spraying for K dot to make up for it. So just to make everybody aware, that's where we're at. County roadside mowing begin in late May. There are three cycles of mowing throughout the summer. And the first, uh, round is about sixty percent complete, probably a little higher because the crews have been out today mowing. Um, so that's, that's a lot further ahead than normal and where we're normally at. Mussisal, noxious weed in Kansas is at the stage of growth where it needs to be, um, sprayed. I mean, we're days away from it going to seed. Uh, commissioners are aware, we reach out to folks that have infestations. I will just mention in this regard that, um, when I took over, I had an extra step when it comes to noxious weed enforcement. Uh, that step is, is I reach out in person, uh, with the hopes of shaking a hand, introducing myself, exploring what resources landowners have. And I have found that if I do that, I believe that, um, long-term being good stewards of the ground goes up exponentially. Um, so in the seven years I've been doing it, by going out and knocking on doors, um, we have yet to have to do a forced compliance on noxious weed. So pretty proud of that. But one thing in reflection, I would probably take a page out of the book of our appraiser's office. And I've ordered a couple of polo shirts that have the Riley County logo on us. So I'm a little more readily identified as I walk up and knock on people's doors. So that's something that I thought probably be a good idea to have more of a readily, um, identifiable appearance. So that's something we're moving forward with. Riley County has noxious, uh, cost share chemical for noxious weeds of landowners. Uh, if you need, uh, if you have an infestation, please reach out to us. Having said that, commissioners, our herbicides go up dramatically, much like gasoline, they can go up overnight. And here recently, we've seen a spike of ten dollars a gallon within three or four weeks. The issue for us at the weed department becomes by state law, I can only sell it for what we paid for it. There are several laws that regulate how we can do it. The issue becomes when we're at twelve dollars a gallon and retail is twenty-five dollars a gallon, suddenly several landowners have a noxious weed outbreak. Um, so I will be putting some additional rules in place to make sure that we are within compliance with the state law. Um, that's probably gonna upset a few folks moving forward because over the years, they've gotten pretty good deals on chemical. But as President Reagan said, trust but verify, I will probably be doing a little less trusting and a little more verify. So I will be bringing what those changes are to the rules in front of the commissioners. Um, not necessarily needing, uh, the approval, but to make the commissioners aware of what we're going to do to kind of shore that up a little bit. Because you may, moving forward, he tries to buy a large amount of chemicals, might get a phone call with concern on that. So I want to make everybody aware of why we're making that change and what those changes will be. So I'll be coming back in front of you with that. Our HHW collection at, uh, on, at Howies will be this Saturday, June fourteenth, from eight to noon. Um, again wildly popular this time of year. We see between eighty and ninety folks dropping off material. It's not uncommon for us to have about eight or nine thousand pounds of HHW dropped off during those. And finally, uh, Justin Brenner and I will be out of town for lithium ion training in Parker, Colorado, which brings me to my visual aids that I have here this morning. Um, we've all heard of lithium ion fires. This contains, um, vaporizers or vape pens. Most of them still have power to them. You'll be shocked to, to know this is from one user in one year, vape pens. And the issue with these is.
You need to slow down. What's that? You need to slow down.
She explained that she, uh, uses about one every seven to ten days. Most of these are not refillable. If you press the button, uh, these will vaporize, create a hot pocket inside of them. That's about twelve hundred degrees Fahrenheit. For those of you that remember the book four fifty-one, that is the temperature in which paper ignites. Um, and so when we hear about trash truck fires and lithium ion batteries, uh, when a lithium ion battery is crushed and is exposed to air, it will combust and it burns very hot, like three thousand, four thousand degrees Fahrenheit. But I believe, um, that most of our trash dumpster fires are related to these. And as the buttons are pressed, they can ignite. But I believe um that most of our trash dumpster fires are related to these and as the buttons are pressed, they can ignite. So um Justin and I will be going to training out in Colorado, um hopefully learning what they might be doing in Colorado about this growing problem. As these are not fun to handle, um somewhat biologically hazardous, but probably not anymore than a discarded cup. But obviously people have used these. Um, and then we also have the additional deal. We're hoping to gain some training out there in Colorado. Um, many people use these to ingest THC marijuana. And I don't know if there's any way to particularly identify that, if they're marked. Pretty confident none of these contain marijuana, but at the end of the day, um we would like to be able to identify those. So just wanted to give you a visual aid Commissioners of kind of what we deal with with lithium ion battery, what counties are dealing with as we move forward on disposal of this. The cost associated with that. Um, and then just to explain what we hope to gain from the training in Colorado. We're pretty excited about what they do with that out there. So that was my visual aids.
Yeah, Mike, can any of those, if they're actually crushed in your hand or step on one, could they ignite too?
They will ignite fairly quickly. Lithium ion batteries will react within seconds um to, to what, what it reacts to is the moisture in the air. If you take a strip, strip of lithium and you throw it in water, it'll crack pop and it'll be white hot, much like a sparkler you use at Fourth of July. That's very similar. As far as exploding is concerned, um it really takes a significant crush. They've made a lot of advancements in lithium ion batteries. Um, that's why you kind of hear less and less about a laptop catching fire in the cargo of a, of a plane. There have been some regulations where they are preventing what they call runoff and lithium ion batteries are a number of different batteries cells. And it used to be if one failed and got hot, it could create a chain reaction. Well, they have designed them such that they're encapsulated each. So if one goes off and, and has a runoff, in theory, it should prevent the rest of them from doing it as well. But your answer to your question is if they're exposed to air, the reaction will be.
It will to explode.
Yes, but not necessarily an explosion. You, you'll know to get away from it. Hopefully you will have time, but a lot of them will fail when they're being charged, which is a lot of times these e-bikes that are maybe a lower quality. People will put them in their garage and they will put a, a, a charger to them. Um, I would never charge an e-bike unattended. Um, would recommend never doing that because of that sort of fire. With everything else, you know, combustion engine, the same way if gas leak. Just that people need to be aware of what we got going on. But good question.
You talk about, you talk about the THC, that's not the weed you usually deal with.
I'm sorry, that's not the weed you usually deal with.
It, it is not.
It is not.
That's when I came from law enforcement, everybody said, Michael, you know plenty about weed, but what do you know about noxious? I've learned that.
That's what you call an obnoxious.
Different type. But thank you for letting me share my visual aids and knowing what.
I appreciate it. I greatly appreciate you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Next Commissioner, you have Anna Burson at ten thirty.
Hey, don't man. Good. Not bad, a little bad.
I'd save a couple more.
First he wants.
I want some of those neon ones.
Won't misplace them.
Yes.
Do the easy to find.
I guess.
Hawk watching.
Doesn't make it go fast.
No, it doesn't. You ready, Craig? Morning Commissioners, Anna Burson, County Appraiser. I'm here with our monthly staff update. Um, I'll just start with our personal property and appraisal support. Um, just to kind of reiterate, we certified personal property values to the clerk on May twenty first. Um, we did do some position description updates and we presented those during our expanded position presentation. And we've already transitioned staff to fully managing our digital processes for those various residential phases. Our team's preparing for upcoming legislative changes as they pertain to our personal property. It's important for the public to understand that House Bill twenty two thirty one, I think it was section two, three and twelve. Essentially to exempted specific items of personal property from the all other uh tangible personal property, not otherwise specifically classified subclass two, section one, article eleven of the Kansas Constitution. Um, the following personal property items will be exempt from property taxation beginning in tax year twenty twenty six. Off-road vehicles that do not qualify to operate upon a highway. Um, these vehicles include your all-terrain, your recreational off-highway vehicles, golf carts, um off-road motorcycles and snowmobiles. Any motorized bicycle, electric assisted bicycle, electric assisted scooters, um electric personal assisted mobility devices and motorized wheels, wheelchairs as items are defined in K S A uh eight dash one twenty six. Any trailer having a gross weight of fifteen thousand pounds or less that's used exclusively for uh personal use and not to produce income. Any marine equipment, including watercraft, trailers designed to launch, retrieve, transport, store watercraft and watercraft motors designed to operate watercraft on the water and any watercraft um under that House Bill again twenty two thirty one. It will also be amended to um amending K S A seventy nine two thirteen to include those above that they do not need to apply to the Board of Tax Appeals for the exemption. So these will all be done at a county level. Um, as I've shared previously, I think watercraft alone was roughly eleven million. Um, that might just be the total impact. I don't remember the exact figures, but effective twenty twenty six, at least eleven million in appraised valuation will be coming off of the tax roll. Um, on the residential side, there's been three hundred and fifty four residential sales to date with a median sale price of roughly two hundred and forty nine thousand dollars. An average sale price is roughly two hundred and seventy one thousand seven hundred and ninety six. Um, again, this is unvalidated sales as we have not, as we are beginning our process of uh reviewing those sales that occurred after the first of the year. Currently, that sales ratio for our unvalidated sales is right around ninety six percent. And sales will remain unvalidated until after we certified in June, which we just did. There's a hundred and thirty eight new permits for twenty twenty five and two hundred and eighty six permit rechecks for twenty twenty four. Our residential team is roughly thirty six percent complete on our annual review for twenty twenty five. On the commercial side, the commercial team's working through our annual review phase, preparing for the Board of Tax Appeals hearings. Commercial annual review is roughly sixty percent complete and there's fourteen commercial sales to date. On ag use, our ag appraisers working through again annual review, verifying the ag use on the properties that did not return their ag maps in twenty twenty four. And we have roughly seventeen land sales relating to ag land um to date for twenty twenty five so far. Um, this is our updated Board of Tax Appeals spreadsheet. Um, and the things to really note on this is the IHOP. IHOP BJ's IHOP was stipulated. Um, Central Bradley also stipulated. Um, and so we are reducing uh this, this list, everything in green is going to be coming off. Target has been stipulated. And so one of the important things to understand as it pertains to a lot of these back years is Riley County has gotten fee appraisals on some of these more challenging properties year after year. But what happens with these tax representatives is they wait until five years down the road. Then they submit fee appraisals for all of the back years. And so then what we're doing and preparing and defending our values, we have to look at our fee appraisal because we had one and we've had one in all of those years, along with their fee appraisal. And then we have to prepare, okay. Who's gonna win? What's the Board of Tax Appeals gonna do in these situations and make the best decision um whether to continue forward or see if there can be an agreement reached? Appraisal is an opinion of value. So obviously they're not always going to be the same. And so um that's, that's essentially what it comes down to. Um, I am happy to also report Manhattan Marketplace will be coming off of this list. That is sixteen different appeals that are still currently on here. And so after receiving fee appraisals and looking at our fee appraisals, um there were decisions made. So you should be seeing some potential abatements. Again, we have to look at the risk, we have to look at the cost and make the best decision we can based on the information that we have. And so I am very, very happy to see this list is gonna shrink even more than what you have. So all of this um again, it's gonna be twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three. So four years of the Manhattan Marketplace will be coming off of this. So that is the A N W, the McAllisters, the Bed Bath and Beyond and the vacant Paul Mitchell um as it's listed here. And so we also did just receive fee appraisals on the Walgreens. That's still outstanding. So we're gonna be reviewing those and then we will um proceed from there. And so this is pretty big. Um, overall, um some, some pretty good wins as far as where we ended up on some of these values from where we were at, where they wanted to be. Um, I'm also excited to announce our Home Depot twenty eighteen. County value was sustained. That case has been outstanding since twenty eighteen. Boda diced the value from six million to four million initially. It went, we took it on further um all the way up to the next level. After Walmart decision out of Johnson County, it was remanded back to the Board of Tax Appeals who sustained Riley County's value. So that right there in itself was a two million dollar potential loss for one tax year. And so that's again, a huge, huge win for Riley County. And so I'm, I'm excited to report that this list is dwindling. Where we're ending up is a lot better than um where they were uh trying to get the values to go. Uh, next list is our pending exemptions. Uh, so we had one more exemption decision come back from the Board of Tax Appeals. The Randolph Community Church decision came back and so that one will be coming off of this list. Um, and this is what remains pending. And other projects in our office, the tax rule certification was a big one. We did certify ten billion, two hundred and forty seven million, four hundred and ninety nine thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars from the uh real estate side of appraised value for Riley County as a whole. As a reminder, with budgeting, four billion seventy million, two hundred and sixty three thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars of that is exempt from taxation. That's forty percent of the appraised value is exempt. Personal property and oil and gas tax roll, we certified fifty six million, two hundred and eighty, two hundred and twenty eight thousand, one hundred and fifty one dollars. That's a good number just to see. So when we're looking at next year, once the January one rolls around, preparing that portion of that's gonna go away as well. Budgets, we've been working on budgets. Um, it's that time of year. Position descriptions, lots of training. Happy to report we are currently fully staffed. Um, and uh a lot of training going on, uh just continuing to move things forward. Exemptions has been um a lot, a lot of time has been dedicated to exemptions, questions, various entities have questions really to exemption, applying for exemption, um what qualifies, what doesn't, what's risking exemption. I'm happy that they're asking the questions. Um, and so yeah, I'm just happy to report that, you know, we're we're working a lot with um different entities to try to answer some of those questions. The K S A seventy nine sixteen thirteen, that's just another project that uh a lot of questions came from my office for that. Um, the R H I D project specifically just appraised value and appraisal related questions and participated in that. Um, and so uh that's really uh a lot of what I have. Just as a reminder, next week is conference. Ooh, I did not mean to do that. Hit a button. Okay, that was supposed to be. There we go. You fixed it. I fixed it. Um, so also statutory compliance for twenty twenty four was met. And so I'm happy to report that. So what happens is we set values January one. This is testing how we did in our valuation and how we set values throughout that whole next year. So January one, twenty twenty four, we set values. Every sale that comes through after that January one valuation date is getting tested back to our valuation. And it's saying, okay, how did we do in setting those values? And so overall, um for Riley County, we were at ninety three percent on the median. That's a great place to be at. Um, there's, there is a threshold in there, but again, uh we did meet statutory compliance for twenty twenty four. We just set twenty twenty five values. So as that works, all of the sales that come through this year, we're gonna get tested back to that January one date and middle of next year, we'll find out how did we do overall when we set those values. And so happy to report that. Um, again, conference next week and that's all I have unless you have questions.
Been very busy.
That's putting it on the table. Lot of days. Any questions? No. Thank you, Commissioners.
Anna. Next Commissioner, Jacob Hanson at ten forty five on R H I D.
Not just one. None of this compares to the fourth July weekend of twenty. Had a lot of three hundred emails in two days. Think a week and a half.
What is it every three, four months?
Alrighty. Good morning, everybody. Jacob Hansen, interim Riley County Councilor here today for you uh, on our RHID discussion. Um, one thing I would like to start off uh, on this presentation is I'd like to, I know we have a public comment session time. And I just kinda wanna go over some of the ground rules that Riley County has in place regarding public comment. Um, public comments shall be limited to no more than three minutes for each speaker. Uh, remarks of individual speakers shall not simply be repetitive of identical comments made by prior speakers. Okay, and any verbal or visual personal attacks on citizens won't be allowed. Uh, those are the ground rules, and as far as selection of individuals who will be uh, presenting, they'll have to be recognized by the chair. Uh, and we'll proceed uh, accordingly. Um, as far as what a general uh, uh, overview of how this is going to go. Um, I'm going to, of course, present this car and the board uh, and its options that the board has. Uh, next, uh, Brittany Phillips will provide some additional information regarding the RHID. Then we will have the thirty minutes for public comment. And then following that, the board will have its uh, time for deliberations into decision regarding the RHID. So I'll move forward uh, as far as what the options for the board are currently. Uh, we can simply split it down into two options. Either the board can allow the RHID to continue. The board can either do this by simply taking no action or they can choose to vote in favor of it. The other option, of course, is to make certain findings of adverse effect and execute the resolution that I have attached. Uh, you'll notice that that'll be done in two separate motions. One will be a motion the board actually means a fact. And then second will be the board making the decision to execute the resolution. Um, if the, if the board has any questions regarding on how that process supposed to uh, is intended to play out, happy to answer those now. Otherwise, I'd I'll defer to uh, Brittany.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Phillips, Budget and Finance Officer, here just to present this morning. Um, the memo and the process that goes into our um, RHID policy and how we came to our conclusion. So first, in the Riley County RHID policy, it does state that the Clerk's Office would conduct an analysis of any our RHID project in conjunction with the Appraiser's Office. And we heard from Anna already this morning that her role in that is only to provide market rate information, just to give us an idea where things are. When looking at the very first presentation that the Commissioners heard from Frontier Development. Um, it was specifically stated in that March sixth presentation that this is an all or nothing development. Specifically with the State of Kansas resources, like this um, is exactly verbatim what was said. When asked if the RHID project, if it were to be denied, would the project not go through, to which the answer was no, it would not go through. Um, I spoke with KHRC this week, which is who Frontier Development or so, sorry, City of Manhattan received the grant application, um, the grant funding through. Um, they said the project would not lose grant funding if the project were to be denied. They would still get that grant funding. Um, and be able to move forward. Um, but obviously, we know that there's incentives having the RHID approved. According to Riley County GIS, these lots that are looking to be purchased are appraised at eighteen thousand dollars. In the presentation given by Frontier Development, they're purchasing each lot for forty thousand dollars. Um, while conducting our analysis, we had a conversation about public infrastructure. How long has that been in place? Has it been in the whole thirty-seven years? Maybe, maybe not. And then what would that look like fifteen years from now? Would that have to be replaced? Then who's gonna pay for that replacement? Is that then gonna turn into special assessments on those homeowners? So that was something that really um, resonated with us when conducting the analysis. Another item, um, because sales tax was brought up on Monday when we discussed. Um, I have state statute information here as well as um, a Kansas Supreme Court case appeal of Harbor Bros. Construction Co. in two fifty-six, which um, we'll reference. I'm not gonna go through any of the information there. And then KHRC has moderate income housing guidelines. Um, which I gave you all a copy of this morning. It's this first sheet. Um, so this is part of the grant application process. Um, and these are the guidelines that we've heard, you know, Frontier Development reference that they have to follow, fall within these income guidelines. Um, so the Manhattan MSA, in, which includes Potawatomi County and Riley County. For a number of people in a household, so I just quoted, you know, if two people were living in a household at a hundred and fifty percent of the area median gross income, that would be a hundred and eight thousand dollars. So that is where that information is pulling from, is straight from the KHRC's website. And these are their twenty twenty-five rates. The other information that I gave you this morning was one, the um, a copy of the housing study that the uh, City of Manhattan did back in twenty twenty-two. Which is the one that Commissioner McKinley um, pointed out on Monday showing that the three hundred and eighteen thousand dollar homes would be under the high income. Um, we have since received a copy of new housing data insurance as of May twenty twenty-five. Um, and I provided those to you as well. Um, so Stephanie from the city provided those to me, and it still shows. I mean, the houses are within that workforce development, but it's on the very high end. It's at that three hundred and eighteen thousand dollar mark. Next, I also had our financial advisor, Greg Berenberg, present, um, sorry, put together a draft analysis of property tax impacts from the RHID project. So I'm not gonna go over every single page that I gave you guys this morning. I'm just gonna go over um, a quick tidbit that he's shared. So of course, it talks about statutory procedures for implementing and financing in RHID and where that tax burden really lies because we as we know, the homeowner would pay the full taxes for the, the house. However, a portion of that would go back to the developer and the county, the city, the school district are all flat. So we would be receiving the same amount for the next fifteen, seventeen and a half years. That creates a tax burden shift, and so this operates in the same way that a TIF would. And that shift gets put on everybody else in the county to make up those additional taxes. There is another piece that um, specifically I wanted to point out because Greg Ber- Berenberg had put together this slide that talks about the county portion of captured, captured revenue by RHID project that's paid to the developer. So this is only the amount that the county could possibly receive, but it's actually all being paid to the developer instead. So through twenty forty, has a total amount of five hundred and fifty-seven thousand, one hundred and seventy-three dollars and seventy-three cents. That does not include, obviously, the amount that the city would get and the school districts would get. This is just the impact loss to Riley County itself.
What page are you on?
Oh, it's
A level history or assess valuation history? I was in the back. Okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, was any of this provided in the packet that was
Okay. All right. Thank you. And we didn't have this information, I will say, just to address that. We didn't have this information on Tuesday when we submitted the packet. We didn't get this till yesterday afternoon. So And as you also just heard from the county appraiser, forty percent of Riley County is already exempt. So that is, that is a huge burden on the taxpayers already. And if this project were to go through, we create another tax burden on our taxpayers. Which brings us to the possible adverse effect, which we have outlined in our policy. And then we've also listed here in the memo. I won't go through all of them, but of course, the potential loss of tax revenue. The undue burden on the county and as well, um, it is outside of the ten years that is outlined in our policy. The Commissioners have any questions for me?
Yeah, whatever. You ready for a public comment? Comment and Jacob, we are timekeeper today.
I'll let you know when you got one minute.
Yeah. Anyone who wants to speak?
You got one back there, dude.
And give us your name.
Hold on one second.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Good morning. Thank you. My name is Gabriela Vega. I'm a member of this community and a taxpayer, just like all of you. Today, you're gonna decide on the development proposal that will bring new housing into Manhattan. You have a few decisions before you. On the one hand, if you reject this project, that would mean that this land will remain undeveloped, likely for years, possibly decades or forever. We don't know. In the meantime, that it remains undeveloped, you're gonna continue to earn zero dollars in taxes from the value of this land. On the other hand, if you approve or take no action against this project, you will have a developed project that will begin to collect taxes in approximately fifteen years. More importantly, you will have allowed the development of workforce, workforce housing that is help, that is intended to help middle-income families, teachers, nurses, police officers. I know this is a multifaceted issue and a tough one. You, as a committee, have stated that you believe that if you approve or take no action against this project, the current taxpayers will be carrying the burden of the people who purchase this uh, these developments. Ms. Phillips just now stated that if you approve or take no action on this, you will be shifting the burden to other taxpayers. However, that is already occurring. Every single time the county appraiser increases taxes or house values, you are shifting the burden on the current people that are paying taxes. But you are doing that without creating opportunities for new communities, new taxpayers. The value in this project is that you will be creating opportunities for homeownership for current residents and for new residents that will be brought in by NBA, PTMW, and other businesses now operating in our community right now. We do need housing, and this project, which has been supported by the state through RHID incentives, by the city commission and by the school district, is a good way to continue growing our community and our tax base. So my request to you today is that you support this project and you help increase those opportunities for communities for our community to have more homeownership. More importantly, to start to build that tax base so that that tax burden isn't remaining only with the people who are here. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else?
Well, good morning, Commissioners. Uh, my name is Mel Borst, and I reside at, in Manhattan at nineteen eighteen Humboldt Street. As you consider your votes uh, on this request, I would like to provide some concerns about what I believe is one of the sites involved located at the northeast corner of Leavenworth and North Eleven Streets. This site contains two important heritage homes that provide affordable housing as well as neighborhood stability and a sense of place for our community. In fact, the large corner home is in such a prominent location that it displays two parade porches on its second floor, one that looks west over the park and the other south and east over the Leavenworth Street neighborhood. To facilitate the site's redevelopment proposal, the City of Manhattan ignored the Manhattan Urban Area Comprehensive Plan Land Use Plans Strategic Neighborhood Conservation Guidance. And the plans adopted Housing Study recommending to utilizing to, to utilize existing housing stock and instead spot zoned this destructive over-scale, multi-family replacement project into this formerly down-zoned, conserved East Park neighborhood. In doing so, the zoning protections and property due process rights taken from city, from citizens in this neighborhood by the city are now being reviewed in court. And the reviews constitutional legal actions may allow unlimited appeal. As such, it is important, or how wise it is to approve tax funding to further facilitate this over-scale destabilizing, for-profit, spot-zone redevelopment by not only subsidizing its construction, but also tax subsidizing the destruction of existing historic and affordable East Park neighborhood housing. I would be pleased to answer any of your questions and happy to return anytime for more in-depth testimony of the situation. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, good morning, Commissioners. I, Mr. Chairman, I hope you'll add three minutes to our comment period because that wasn't Mr. Chairman, good morning, commissioners. I, Mr. Chairman, I hope you'll add three minutes to our comment period because that wasn't really pertinent to this application.
I'll decide that.
I know. Uh, I'm going to try to quickly get through my comments. And I'm on page sixty-six in your packet. It's the criteria. The first one is the potential loss of revenue from the policy. The way the policy is written, that's probably a guaranteed failure for everyone uh who has an RHID. Depending on how you look at it, the RHID is intended to be a public policy saying we're going to allow a development to set aside the increment in tax increase for a public purpose. In this instance, affordable housing and the cities agreed with it. School boards agreed with it, and we're hoping that you too will agree with it. The potential increase in uh delivery of public services. Quick math, I may be wrong and you can correct me. But uh there's twenty-six units, putting two adults in each unit. That is a total of fifty-two people. So you're going to have four more citizens a month coming down here to pay taxes uh either on cars or their or their home. You'll have about fifty-two more adults voting in elections. That's assuming if there's a hundred percent turnout, which we is probably unlikely. I don't know how many police calls are going to be there, but my number in my mind is pretty low. How many times the police will be called to one of these residences? I don't think they're going to create new demand for jail space. And and then you're asking the appraiser to incorporate about twenty-six new units into their uh process for evaluation. My judgment, that is not an undue burden to the county, but I'll leave that to your judgment. Yes, the number four, current and potential uh fiscal impacts to county governance are greater than the benefit of the policy. Uh, I I'm hoping to hear from each of you on these on what 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 how you see they not complying because I'm I'm not seeing that in my assessment. And um so with that, oh, one last comment because I've got a little bit of time. There's a comment about the eighteen thousand dollar, which is the uh it's not the market value. Nobody in this room sets the market value except for the landowner. My guess is this individual is trying to recruit his special assessments cost that he paid over twenty years. And that's why we're seeing a difference between what the county shows as a value that's uh not a market value, but the assessed value versus a market value. So I hope you take that into consideration. Thank you very much for uh listening to it.
Well, thanks, commissioners. I appreciate you setting aside time for this important topic. As you may know, um I was helping on developing the RHID up in the legislature. And one of the reasons we did that was to enable those counties that were unable to find the kind of uh abilities in the contracting world to do this themselves. In other words, does a market allow that kind of housing to be built without assistance? Now, when we looked at the uh this property, you all know how tax increment financing works. So that property, all the taxes from that property that the county currently gets will continue to get. The increment means any additional income from taxes over that time period now set at fifteen years will accrue to pay off, in many cases, its bonds until the period the term expires, in which case eight million dollars on those uh twenty-six townhomes or homes will come back to the county. Eight million dollars. Now you're getting pittance. Now, we all have realities. The reality is, as stated over and over again, that forty percent, forty-some percent is untaxable in this county. We can't change that. The only way that you know we can change it is to put more on the tax rolls. That's exactly what this does. You all received from me some time ago, my objections to the county policy. There are so many negatives in there that we took down from Sedwick County. Sedwick County has six hundred and seventy-five thousand people. They have flat land and not a heck of a lot of rocks. So the building cost is higher in Manhattan, Kansas than it is here. So my interest now is how do we get workforce housing? What is the practical number that we can afford? That number is done by these young fellows is three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. So we have a couple of primary questions. How do we get this done? Because if this doesn't work, I will argue that not another RHID project will come out of Riley County. The next question is, what is Riley County Commission going to do in the way of future planning for workforce housing? Thank you very much.
Thank you, commissioners, for the opportunity to speak. In two thousand and twenty-two, the Manhattan City Commission studied our housing market, and what we found is that we are facing a serious shortage of workforce housing. These are the homes that should be attainable for the people who care for our kids, feel are sick, and respond to emergencies, serve our meals, and staff the businesses that make this city run. These are not strangers. They're our neighbors, and they are the backbone of the Manhattan and Riley County community. Affordable housing challenges didn't start during the pandemic, but the pandemic certainly made it worse. Rising construction costs, supply chain issues, and labor shortages only exacerbated the issue. Manhattan faces its own set of challenges, limited housing inventory, aging homes, and the constant demand of student population that shifts every day. Our study made it clear, we need nearly nine hundred and fifty new workforce housing units over the next twenty years. Homes for families earning sixty to a hundred and twenty percent of our area median income. But here's the reality. The market cannot solve this alone. Those homes will not get built without public-private partnership. The last time a residential building permit was pulled for a single-family home under two hundred and forty thousand dollars in Manhattan was over a decade ago. That's why Manhattan voters stepped up, approving a dedicated sales tax to support workforce housing. That vote wasn't just about funding. It was a reflection of our shared values, a belief in a community that works for everyone with a growing economy, attainable housing, and better quality of life for all who call Manhattan home. But achieving that vision requires partnership. We need continued collaboration with our school district and the county as well. Because strong schools, stable neighborhoods, and a thriving local economy are all deeply connected. And when public institutions work together with shared purpose, we all win. The RHID is not a silver bullet, but it is a powerful step forward, a chance to do more than maintain the status quo. Because right now, those twenty-six underutilized lots are only generating sixty-seven hundred dollars a year, while housing costs soar and families leave Manhattan in search of something more sustainable. Do we want to be the kind of city where teachers, nurses, and first responders can afford to live near the people they serve? Where young families can buy their first home and retirees can downsize without leaving the community they've spent their lives building? Where neighborhoods are more than a collection of houses? There are places where kids play, families grow, and people feel they belong. Today, though, we're not just talking about an RHID and a financial tool. Today, we are also talking about our future and our willingness to partner together to grow Manhattan into what we want it to be. Thank you.
You you already had it turned.
Got Josh.
You're different.
Josh in the back.
I know. Point you got behind, just making sure. Yeah, Josh. Copies of.
Good morning, commissioners, uh chair commissioners. Thank you for your consideration and diligent discussion of the proposed reinvestment housing incentive district. At Habitat for Humanity, we have advocated for the development of clear and consistent policies for the application of incentive districts. And I thank the county for their work in developing a clear comprehensive policy, particularly want to uh thank the attorney who wrote that. Uh, we will continue to advocate for consistency across tax authorities to ensure that developers are confident in their applications. Housing is a complex issue that requires coordination, cooperation, and trust between public, for-profit, and nonprofit sectors. When we fail in the second housing, our failure will be realized as stagnant economic growth, persistent poverty, as we know, we're the only persistent poverty county in the state of Kansas, loss of critical workforce, degradation of health health outcomes, and more. I am hopeful that we can succeed be successful in developing housing, in particular homeownership, solutions that will serve as a foundational element for quality of life in a strong and thriving community. I appreciate this commission's focus on housing affordability and target beneficiary. Affordability is a critical concern for our neighbors, but we know that housing is not objectively affordable or unaffordable. It's affordable to a particular income and below when the total cost of rent or ownership, including utilities, does not exceed thirty percent of the household cost. When or household income. When we focus on workforce housing, we are focusing on those households earning between fifty-four thousand and a hundred and eight thousand dollars a year, sixty to a hundred and twenty percent AMI. These neighbors are searching for homes generally that cost between two hundred and three hundred thousand dollars. We've got seven percent interest rates. We've got, you know, reasonable debt. In the housing market analysis commissioned by City Manhattan, which I served on the steering committee, this group's twenty-year demand projected originally at five hundred and ten for purchase units costing between a hundred and twenty and two hundred and fifty thousand. We recognize that this project falls outside the affordability and subsidy periods defined in Riley County's policy. We wish to be respectful of the boundaries communicated by this body to applicants and other tax entities. We also recognize and applaud the applicants for their success in securing tax credits and a moderate income housing award, of which we wrote a letter of support. From these, from the discussions at this point, it appears that Riley County is circling around a type of yes-if policy position. Yes, on RHID, if those projects are affordable to our median household income. If that is the position of of the county, I would ask that it be formalized explicitly in the policy and communicated to other tax entities so that we might avoid conflict and increase confidence in developer applications. Thank you for your work.
Mark Bashamp, and and I'm going to bring a different uh component to this and being an engineer and and traveling the state, uh kind of the experiences I've come up with. Yesterday, I was with a central Kansas city manager, and they just uh got a project, a moderate income housing project that where they built their first house in ten years because of this policy, and their policy was for twenty-five years. They recognize the only way that they can grow their local economy as far as far as expanding their local business base is to increase housing. And that has started now in that community. The other thing is they looked at is there's no way they can build a house that is affordable unless there's incentives into that. The times have changed. Got another city I've worked with that we did a twelve-plex apartment four years ago that was nine hundred thousand dollars. Got completed this last year for two million. That's how much that price has increased. How do you charge the rent for workforce housing at eight hundred dollars, nine hundred dollars a month when you go from nine hundred to two million in construction? It does not work. In that city, they gave them free land, and they also did twenty-five-year RHID with Mih. So what I'm saying here is this is something that we need to grow Riley County. There's been a discussion is is why is everything going to Pot County? This is just going to speed that up. And you're talking about minimal amount of money that you're talking about here maybe losing. You're going to be losing millions in the future if you push this to Potwatomie County. Great for Potwatomie County. But what about Riley County and its growth? Because Riley County has got to increase its revenue, and and we've got to bring more housing, and we have to bring more business in the community. So, thank you.
Now, I got somebody back here.
Hi, my my name's Randy Martin, and I live here in Riley County. My business happens to be on the other side of the county line, so I kind of watch these things. I'm not currently involved in any of these groups here, so I'm kind of here as a taxpayer, although I have been involved in a lot of these groups over the years, including the chamber and the school board and some other things. But I guess uh I'm trying to respect, put myself in the seat that you're in, and that you have to make a decision about this. And all of these numbers and all of these things are important and they need taken into account. But at the end, you've got to approve or disapprove. You're going to have to vote yes or no. So I thought, well, how how would I think about that if I were in your seats? I guess first of all, I would think, well, suppose you could go back twenty-five or twenty or fifteen years ago, and this RHID had existed. If those county commissioners in Riley County, then John Show and Bob Newsome and all those guys, if they'd had the opportunity to do this then, would you look at this today and say they made a mistake? Or would you say, wow, it's on the tax rules, it's making money? We're glad they did that. Or would you still defend the idea that, well, no, the costs were more during the ten or fifteen or twenty-year period than they incurred. I I personally think they would, you would look back and say, yeah, they did a good thing for you today that it's on the tax rolls. The other thing as a taxpayer, I'd say y- you see some good and some bad, and I I tend to think the good outweighs the bad. But whatever that increment is, is that increment enough for you to reject this and say to all the other organizations that saw good? The state of Kansas, the general told us about, the city, the chamber, the school district. The good that they see is you're differential enough to say all of their goods are worth rejecting, that you can reject the project for everyone because of the increment you see between the good and bad. And I think that's kind of a hard decision for you to make. It's kind of a short-term, long-term thing. Short-term, I guess, you might see the scales one way, but long-term, I think you'd have to say we want to infill and get as much land at a higher tax rate as we can anywhere in the county. Thank you.
Yeah, time left.
Yeah, we got about ten minutes.
I didn't, I wouldn't. Yes.
Good morning, commissioners. Matt Crocker. Um, I have been fortunate to serve this community in many roles, including past chair of the Chamber, past chair of the Greater Manhattan Community Foundation, and many others. But today I'm here to speak to you as CEO of a local business. Um, first, I empathize that it is a very difficult balance between foregoing tax revenue and supporting recreation. Um, you have a very difficult task at hand. Um, through some of the comments, I have heard a focus on income levels when um guiding, making um decisions that relates to this proposal. And as a local employer who generally employs white-collar employees in Manhattan, but draws employees from across the county and adjoining counties, the cost of housing in the area is consistently mentioned as a concern as a uh concern when attempting to retain and recruit employees. We simply need more options. And again, recognizing it's a difficult balance uh to meet the needs and desires of your varying constituents constituents. I'm not here to ask you to convince yourself to vote for or in favor of the RHID. I'm just asking you not to kill it. Um, such action would be in direct conflict with support already given by the two other large elected bodies um who have supported this project and stifle and albeit maybe not perfect, but a viable solution to a critical county need. Thank you.
Morning commissioners, I'm Jason Smith with Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce. We sent you a letter this morning from our board, so I'm not going to take my full three minutes to hopefully leave time if there are others. I just want to reiterate what we said in the letter. Our board of thirty-two members representing thirty-two businesses and organizations and employing nearly ten thousand people requests that you all let this project proceed using RHID. We agree with Commissioner McKinley's assessment that taxes are a major concern of our small businesses and entrepreneurship entrepreneurs. Where we may differ is the solution. We can't keep passing the growing costs of government to a stagnant population. We must be aggressive in attracting more taxpayers to share in those expenses. We believe growth is the only way to maintain our quality of life and government services, and the two primary mechanisms to achieve these are jobs and homes. That's why the state of Kansas created the RHID program. We believe the infill nature of this project fits the intent of the program, and because this project is on existing lots, creates very little, if any, undue burden to the various governing bodies. I do want to take a moment to thank Gavin and Tyler for their willingness to invest over ten million in our community. We know there are communities around the state that would love to have that kind of investment, and we don't ever want to take that for granted. Thank you for considering this project and for time to speak today.
Anyone else?
I've spoken this already, correctly, correct? I'm saying you, you are standing as you've already spoke on this matter.
No others, we'll close the public. Okay. Just trying to wait to make sure.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm Scott Seal, served on the Housing Steering Committee, produced the report that's been mentioned multiple times today. Already presented some comment to you guys directly, so I wanna say something just a little bit different. I think we've talked about two different problems that we face as a community, and I think everyone in the room agrees that they exist. We have a shortage of housing, and we have a problem with housing costs, and we have a growing property tax burden on the community. Both of those things are supply issues. We have the housing cost issue. We have one point nine months of supply of housing on the market right now in Manhattan. Six months and up is considered a buyer's market. The housing cost issue will not go away as long as demand exceeds supply. The only way to add supply is through new construction. If you want to use a non-incentivized new construction policy, you are going to continue to see four and five and six hundred thousand dollar new construction projects. That's just the only, that's the reality of the math. So if we don't do anything, that's what will continue to happen, and you will continue to see that median price, which for citywide in Manhattan is two hundred and ninety thousand dollars, including Potawatomi County side. You will continue to see that go up. Five years ago, it was two hundred and twenty thousand. The other problem we have is an increased property tax burden on our consumers, on our citizens. If we do not add more tax base, that will only continue to happen. The fixed costs that you guys see as a county are going up, as I know you well know. If we have the same number of people and the same number of houses and we need more money, the only way to do that is to increase the taxes. If we grow the tax base, if we start adding homes, and I understand that I'm asking there to be a little bit of a delayed gratification here, because we will not get an increase immediately. But if we grow the tax base for the community, we can collect more with the same mill levy. So the, lastly, the reality is, and I know that K H R C doesn't require it, but this will not happen, this development will not happen if you vote no today. It will die. The contract for the real estate is contingent upon R H I D approval. If you vote no today, that contract is dead. So, the loss of revenue is nonexistent. If you vote no today, those will continue to be grass for the next thirty-four years, just like they've been for the last thirty-four years. Thank you.
For, by the way, I had a small typo on the resolution. I have that fixed in this version here. It was just on section two.
Oh, there's copies for us.
No, no. Whatever action you decide to take.
Too many papers up here.
I think we've laid it out pretty clear on the six items there. Number six, I think, is the big one for me. I I just continue to believe that, and I've got data here that shows across the state that, and it's not just our area necessarily, but there are houses and housing in this area being built for well under three hundred thousand dollars, and I, I still believe that's, that's the case. I took some time when I was working yesterday. I obviously work out at Florence, and I guess that's more blue collar than white collar, but come to realize that even myself and the people I work with, none of us are ever gonna be able to apparently afford a house, I guess. That's just the reality. Sad, but nobody there is gonna step foot in one of these. I'm not gonna step foot in one of these. I just feel like, what are, what are we really subsidizing at this point in time? I I just, that's, that's the challenge I just can't seem to work around. And all of this. It's not the project itself that I have issues with, or the developer, or anybody who's attached to it. I think they've done a great job with it, but just that subsidy side of it and what we're doing with it, and I just, just can't work around it. I've tried. Since six months we've worked on this, and I wanna commend our staff for the bandwidth and everything, and the time and effort that they put into this. I know it's been a lot of work, but I just I can't get around it.
Yeah, workers out there, what do, what do they make? What's a?
Ballpark?
Yeah, ballpark.
Probably somewhere around eighteen on average. Dollars an hour.
Eighteen. So what is that per year, do you know, by any chance?
And there's a lot of overtime involved in that, so I would say you're probably looking about forty is.
Had even two people with forty thousand dollars total, they couldn't afford this one.
And it'd be a stretch, and I think it's a stretch with the numbers that we're working with currently, because you gotta figure in the other aspects of life. I mean, most teachers have a degree, so it's more than likely that they're gonna have student loan debt, probably car payment, probably credit card debt. Obviously, you have to buy groceries, utilities, so on and so forth. All that comes off of that forty-something thousand dollars just to start with, before you even, before you even look at the idea of trying to buy a house, and if you're on the open market, ten percent down, where do you come up with that? If it's a secondary market, it's twenty percent down, I think. You know, outside of all the burdens that we discussed internally, you know, on the county side, we continue to add to that real estate exemption burden, and it's, as we found out this morning, it only moved three percent, but our expenses moved almost seven and a half percent. It's just just not matching up.
Well, it's been very difficult, and you know, when we developed our policy, we we did that, you know, to make ourselves clear and and for the county and what we thought was right for our people, all of the people in the county, and, you know, it's I don't think it's that, I mean, it's restrictive, but on purpose, and we spent tons of time on this whole policy. And I, I think it's a good policy for us. The one thing I've thought about, and I've worked on this and studied, you know, three hundred and eighteen thousand per unit, which could go up, is not affordable for most of people, at least I know, that are actually working in, you know, even in the county, you know, with our averages. I think about the burden it's putting on the other taxpayers, my, myself included. I pay property taxes and specials. And, you know, that's, that's, keeps going every year, and it's tough. And we're pricing people out, you know, with the specials and and all that, but do I or do you as a taxpayer paying specials on your home, do you wanna give money to people, other people? Is it fair to be paying their specials basically in our taxes? And my answer to that is no. It doesn't, it's not, it's not fair to the rest of our, our county people. To me, the R H I D would work better in smaller communities, and we have a lot of smaller communities that could, it would work really well. We have a lot of land up north. We've got, you know, land down south as, as a county, as, as a development, we can use north to south, not only east to west. And I don't know, it's just, when I went through all of our, our items here, the adverse effect, potential loss of tax revenue for that period of time, even on our ten years, that would be, be high. Current potential fiscal impacts to the county government, governance are greater than the benefits. We have fire, we have ambulance. I am concerned about the infrastructure problems that will happen in that area. You know, with connecting across the street, I guess. I I haven't seen any studies done on, on boring examples on, on that. It's very, it's just difficult. This whole thing is very difficult. I know we need housing in the community. I don't know, I don't believe this is basically the right way to go about it. At least for this development, I, it's, it, it's got six adverse effects according to our policy.
So my thoughts, that housing supply fluctuates all the time. It gets bad, you know, I bought, I moved here in oh-six, which was absolutely top of the market at that time, and it was difficult to find a house. But it did correct after that. It came back down for a few years. The just the fiscal, financial part of all this thing, you can listen to my meeting Monday, and I, I'm not gonna go through all that again, all the problems there are with the way it's, the way the numbers are shown. But as John has said, that the income levels were, were hitting the very top limits of that workforce housing. That's not what we don't think it is top. It's, and using the city's numbers from a couple of years ago, we're looking at the top twenty or twenty-five percent of incomes in the in the city. I don't think that's workforce housing. Yes, it is, by your own studies, shown there.
I'm shaking my head.
Yeah, I'm telling you, you're wrong. That, it just, there's a lot of problems with this.
Yeah, our cost per lot really bothers me too.
Like there's a whole series of financials in there that don't add up.
You know, our praiser is good at at valuing land and properties, and I probably the eighteen, the eighteen thousand dollars as it's valued as, I don't believe that's too low for the property. Otherwise, you know, why hasn't that, that development owner sold any lots yet? Even on single family, forty thousand, that's really my forty lot, and that adds into the cost.
Take a motion.
So, do you have the cards? Here, I got, I will hear in just a second.
Anything else we need to talk about?
I've, I've got it here digital, but I just chew it.
Well, I don't know. I just, it's, it's a very difficult question. You know, I've heard from a lot of different people, and I've lived in that, up in that neighborhood before, close to Karen, and know what the impact are. Know what the impact could be, especially with the street and stuff.
Go ahead and move that the board make following findings regarding adverse effects caused by the L K R H I D. One, potential loss of tax revenue. Two, potential increase in public service hindering the effective delivery of said public services. Three, place an undue burden on Riley County. Four, current and potential fiscal impacts to county governance are greater than the benefit. Five, the term of the L K R H I D is outside the ten years, and six, the inability of the project to provide quality housing for occupants with an income below the area median income.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
Okay, I would second that motion.
Been moved and seconded, the board make following findings regarding adverse effects by R H I D as, as listed. All in favor?
Correct. Move the board execute the attached resolution findings adverse effects on Riley County regarding the city of Manhattan's establishment of the L K Town Homes reinvestment housing incentive district.
I would second that.
Been moved and seconded, the board execute the attached resolution, pardon me, finding adverse effects on Riley County regarding the city of Manhattan's establishment of the L K Town Homes R H I D. All in favor?
All brief, you sign.
After watch your conscience. I have a lot of unhappy people.
Oh, yeah. But there's a lot of happy people too.
Yeah, me too.
Well, we didn't hear from here. I've heard from them.
Oh, yeah.
Other places. Majority of people talking to me about it outside of this. I meant to say that in my comments, majority outside this meeting.
Public.
And even some of the people who received the chamber note saying favorite, sent notes saying no.
Okay. I didn't even see their board letter. Of course, I had to.
It was late in the day yesterday.
Well, not that letter, but that other one, it's called action.
Oh, that, yeah. Are we okay on, we're okay on this, or can we get?
This, this resolution's ironclad.
Thank you for all your help.
Of course. Just doing my job.
I've got, I've got some.
Oh, I've got some.
I've got something stronger in mind.
Like I told Rich, lunch on you?
I'd say, I told you, said you'd probably spring for it. They were talking liquid.
Not here, though.
No.
Oh, okay, okay. I'm just gonna clarify. All right. Well, with that said, I'll go ahead and make a motion to adjourn the June twelfth meeting of the Riley County Commission.
I would second that.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn this June twelfth meeting of the Riley County Commissioners, all in favor?